This is the October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four special meeting of the Prairie Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice that special meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Oklahoma Meetings Act. Notice this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, and the two river terms on September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. Notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, and as remain continuously posted that is required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file to the offices of Borough Court. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested this information according to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of Prairie Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Board is separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically decided for the Borough ordinances and the New Jersey municipal land use law. It's quasi judicial in nature and the members of the Board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the Mayor and Council. The zoning Board does not enact the Borough land use laws in regulation, the Borough Council does that. The zoning Board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Office. This Board deals with appeals for relief from their requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required in the Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Prairie Zoning ordinances by satisfying certain applied standards of proof. The Board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variants is related to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized or remedy temporary for any personal situations. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nifflin?
Here.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Vally? Mr. Borde?
Here.
Dr. Lawford?
Here.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
Mr. Sheehy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here. Please turn on the lights. United States of America, into the Republic of Canada, one nation, one people, one nation. First matter for the Board tonight is going to be the Goodwin matter. We did actually take testimony and hear a significant course to this application in July. Since then, the matter has not been reached, July eleventh. Since then, the matter has not been reached, but it's been carried without the need to be noticed. Based upon what we have so far, I have the following additional exhibits. There was a revised architectural, revised to July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, that was marked as seven A. We also have new board exhibits up to ZB three, which is the semi review letter of July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. We did have a certification from John Ridgway, and it's new at this point because he is not here. So up to ZB three, and I believe the next market, if you have any additional exhibits to stray against, will be A well.
No further exhibits other than the revised plans which you referenced as seven A.
I do know that we have some revised numbers that Mr. Rizzo was going to go through. That might be a good place to start, just as I go.
So I just want to clarify really quickly because I don't like to continuously issue more letters, but there was one additional exhibit provided to me specific to calculating floor area. So a couple of numbers in my July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four letter are a little bit different. The first one is the maximum floor area, which is zero point three one zero, still a D variance, and then maximum floor area is now three thousand one hundred and four square feet. That change now eliminates the the bolt variance.
Say that again, Jordan?
Sure.
Thirty-two, you have thirty-two forty-two, right? And then that's thirty-one oh four now?
Correct. And I'm sure they'll explain how we got there.
Okay. Anybody who's going to testify on this application think they might have something to say on?
Oh, what's the what's the new ratio? It's not three, two, four, what's the new ratio?
Yes, zero point three one zero.
It's so, it's still.
It's true.
Okay, gotcha.
You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony before the support of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
As I usually say, please state your name before testifying, spelling your last name for purposes of direct concern. For your truth.
Thank you. Chairman, Board Members, Mark Akins on behalf of the applicants, Samantha and Kevin Goodman. When we were last here in July, we had gotten substantially through the application, and as a result of the Board's comments, we gave careful thought to revise into plans. Those plans, which have been submitted and marked today as seven A, reflect a number of revisions, right? Obviously, you heard the reduction in the floor area ratio variance that's come down to thirty-one point oh four percent significant. We also eliminated the floor area variance. We also eliminated the rear yard variance, that was the setback from the proposed new porch. We also eliminated the southerly side yard setback, and these were pursuant to the commentary directly received from the Board. So with that, again, I would recall Kevin Spink, he has been administered the oath of office, chairman, he had been previously qualified in July with regard to expertise as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, I presume his qualification.
Assume we have no less licenses than we had in July?
That is correct.
Still in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Spink, can you take the Board through the revisions on the plans that were submitted and revised through July eighteenth?
Certainly. In the last meeting, there were, do I need to state the name, sorry? Kevin Spink, S.P.I.N.K., from Kansas City Associate Architects. There were four major points that the Board had brought up in no particular order on the way I would like to describe them. The first one was that there was an issue obviously with a variance on all four sides of the house, which where three of them are pre-existing deformities, and one was induced by us putting in a covered porch. Second one was the existing tree at the back of the house, which we decided is a four-foot round at the bottom, that we were planning on removing the tree, and it was brought up that the tree could not be removed unless it was being replaced in time. So obviously, we needed to work around the tree and figure out a way to save that tree. Number three was the overall square footage of the house, and number four was the maximum floor area ratio. So taking in the four side yard setbacks to start with, first of all, we was the rear of the house. The rear of the house, we were putting a covered porch on, we had removed the covered porch completely. So the existing house where we will be remaining is at thirty-eight point one eight seven feet, or thirty feet is allowed. So we are, we have no variance on rear of the house. On the southerly side of the house, the pre-existing condition has a variance where the property was set at nine feet to the existing house, where the requirement is ten feet. We have taken nine foot four and a quarter inches off of that section of the house in this corner here, we've taken nine foot four and a quarter off, fully back at this point. In doing that, we are now removing that pre-existing side yard setback. We are now at ten point two five, ten point two four feet, where ten feet is required. So we have removed that variance. The removal of that variance also covers some other major points on the house. Specifically, I would like to go through the rest of the front, the front of the house. Currently, the house is at twenty-six feet, or twenty-five is required, but the covered porch is at twenty point one seven. We will be maintaining the covered porch at twenty point one seven and expanding it, as we discussed last night, both to the southerly side and to the northerly side in order to make it many continuous porch across the house. The Willow side of the house, the existing garage is at sixteen point five feet existing, where twenty-five feet is required. We are maintaining the garage at the sixteen point one five feet, but as we discussed last time, we are changing the elevation of the roof. So rather than having the gable end, we are now making it a hip roof. So it actually is reducing or pulling that portion back from that side, although the house is still remaining right where it is. In regards to the tree, the existing tree, this is where the reduction of the existing floor in this corner, the existing tree, four feet round at its base, is two foot four off of the corner of the house. By us pulling that house back the nine foot, we are actually clearing and giving the root ball more room, so the tree actually could remain, but we will not be interfering with the tree, which is placed here, I threw it on by hand into the location, just so we can see where it's at. So we are now going to keep the tree, it will not need to be removed at all.
I have clarification with regard to the southerly lot line. The existing home, as I understood it, encroached on the side yard. Are you removing a portion of the existing ranch in addition to removing the proposed addition on the second story?
That is correct. We are removing nine foot four and a quarter inches of the first floor back in order to allow us to clear that. The second floor, we're actually removing, from what our previous plan was, it is approximately thirteen foot eleven inches that we're pulling the second floor back. So it's actually stepping even further back because the tree does have a slight sway to it, so I'm keeping our house away from the tree.
And that because the the lot is skewed?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's why they're back.
Yep, but but now, by pulling it forward, we're giving us more room, and we're actually giving us space to put the air conditioners in that space, the compressors within that space, so they're now behind the house, out of the setbacks as well.
So those air conditioning compressors will be in a conforming location?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So that covers the the first two points, which are the four setbacks as well as the existing tree. The next one is the square footage. First thing that we discussed is we did remove the first floor, we removed nine foot four and a quarter inches of the first floors, we pulled that back. Once we get to the second floor.
What sheet are you referring now to?
Sheet A three of my architectural section?
Sheet A three and seven A.
Correct.
Thank you.
On this, on the sheet on the first floor, we've been accessing where the existing house was, and where we are now removing and pulling it back. We reconfigured the, what was a guest bedroom on that floor, we reconfigured the bathroom, we reconfigured the bedroom, we pulled that section, the end, in order to make it, it's the bedroom is smaller, the bathroom is smaller, we got rid of the closet, it's a smaller closet now, but we were able to get it fit and be able to save the location of the tree. On the second floor, what we did was, again, this corner, where we had been lining up with that first floor, we pulled it back, and we pulled it back further than that, so we actually stepped the house in on the second floor. So we are removing thirteen feet eleven inches off of this side in this area.
So those numbers are from, how many square feet did you remove from the first floor and then the second floor and that's combined as a result of that all finished?
Well, the total, we had been at. Go back, sorry, I didn't actually spell that specifically. Our previous application we came in was at three thousand three hundred and ninety-one square feet total. We are now down to three thousand one hundred and four square feet total.
And that's where all the square feet come off right there?
The square foot comes from, there are four locations where we've taken square foot. One is off of this spot here, two is off of this whole corner here, three was the entire rear of the house, we pulled in two foot six on the whole rear of the house, and then we pulled in the two front corners here at additional six inches from where they were before.
Yeah, that was the question I was gonna, what's the setback from the street? What, how much did we come back from the street?
Again, the existing main part of the house, the the front of the house is still lining up.
It's in line with the existing.
And it conforms, it's at twenty-six feet. So we were not ever creating a new second floor that was in variance. But we did pull this back in at additional six and six here, it still allows the bathroom to work, it still allows the windows to all be uniform across the front with the skirt roof on the front not interfering with the window.
So I calculate the free post as two hundred and eighty-seventh square feet reduction?
That's correct. Then the last item is the the maximum floor area ratio. By by us reducing this, we are now down below the thirty-two hundred and twenty that we are technically the the maximum allowed, so we are now at thirty-one oh three point nine, thirty-one oh four. So it actually falls under, so we've gotten rid of that variance. The last variance that we were asking for and we are still asking for is the maximum floor area ratio. Floor area ratio, again, if we take twenty-eight percent of what the lot should be allowed at eleven thousand five hundred, that would be the thirty-two twenty. Our lot is significantly undersized at ninety-nine, ninety-eight, so we should be allowed twenty-seven ninety-nine point four square feet. We are at the thirty-one oh three point nine, but I believe we've taken out a significant amount of square footage, even even cutting off portion of the first floor to allow the tree to be able to to survive. So I believe we've, and we will be that not conform. Correct, and removing that addition. But at this point, the only variance that I believe we are asking for is the FAR, as well as the pre-existing non-conforming on the front yard setback for the corner of the garage.
And I think the off-street parking on Willow.
Correct.
And existing conditions today are defensively in the right of way, and you're going to be eliminating that fence.
That is.
And that's going to be a compliant fence, and you understand the top corner and.
Correct. Yep. The only issue that, again, the numbers difference between what Mr. Rizzo had calculated and what I had calculated, and the reason why, I do have a a small exhibit, if you'd like to see it, the code requires that the height from your finished floor, second floor, to the underside of rafters under short roofs has to be less than thirty inches. Anything over thirty inches counts as square footage. Mr. Rizzo was counting all of it as square footage with the assumption that it was over thirty inches. So I did present him with a small detail, which if you want to see it, it shows that each one of the roofs that are, the shed roof along the front, the shed roof that will be in here, and the new shed roof that along the rear, all of those are under the thirty inch requirement. So none of that square footage actually counts towards the second floor.
If you're looking at sheet A three, which I think you're probably on already, the second floor, Portland, there is a white box, there's a long one on the top, and then there's three more on the top left, bottom left, and then bottom right. I originally counted those as floor area, and then this exhibit here basically shows that that's the the move between the first floor and the second floor, and that measurement is less than thirty inches.
So I'd like to introduce that, Chairman, since we're reporting to it in both of the testimony respectively. So we're up to eight A now?
Excuse me?
Exhibit?
Exhibit A twelve.
So again, as a side elevation of the house, and it is showing, looking at it from the southerly side of the house, it shows the.
As proposed.
As proposed, that is correct. And it's showing the three roofs that would be in question along the front, the the shed roof that is over the front porch, as you can see on that one.
Can you just point them out for the Board?
Correct, would be this side right here. It is now one foot, just making sure I've had this one foot oh and a half between what would be finished floor and the underside of the rafter on that.
So that doesn't count?
Does not count.
Right.
Second one is a the shed roof that will be over the the stepped in second floor from the first floor at the side, where we pulled the side in. That is at two foot three and three quarters of an inch from the underside of rafter to finish floor.
So that one doesn't count?
Does not count. And then the last one is the rear skirt that will go across the whole back of the house, running along this section here, where we pulled the whole rear in by two foot six on the second floor. That finish floor to underside of rafter, one foot one and three eighths of an inch.
So that one doesn't count?
That is correct.
Thank you.
There was an element of that in the original plan, as I recall, was it simply the generation of the new plan and the lack of specificity with regard to the dimensions that led to the speculation?
I understand that you probably pulled in the second floor a little bit on the second decision?
Yes.
So lots of this.
But you were using similar design elements before, but they were further extending from the old footprint, and now they're in play in the new footprint.
That is correct. That was the reason why the numbers were a little skewed in the first application that we came, I didn't know why, that is the reason why.
Have you completely eliminated the the rear porch?
Yes, completely.
Gone.
Yep, there's a patio out there, it's just our patio on grade.
And Mr. Rizzo, what is the delta between what the floor area ratio limits the house at, given the lot size and the proposal, the total square footage?
The lot, the the existing lot size?
Yeah, I, I, so we're we're beneath the cap, we're beneath the thirty-two twenty cap, but we're tripped up on floor area ratio, and I heard, I heard the number at twenty-seven and change.
Twenty-seven ninety-nine.
Two hundred and five square feet.
Twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Oh, so twenty-seven ninety-nine, the proposal is three zero.
Three one oh four.
Three one oh four, so it's three hundred and five?
Yeah, correct.
Square feet beyond, and so you would conform with regard to that?
Correct.
What's the square footage of the first floor?
Sixteen seventy-eight.
And the second?
Second is fourteen seventy-four point three.
First floor is sixteen thirty.
Where did you say?
Sixteen twenty-nine.
Sixteen twenty-nine point six is the square footage of first floor.
Okay. I have no further questions of Mr. Spink, Chairman, Board Members. I can recall Mr. Hudak, if necessary, but I'm sure he would testify that the reduction and elimination of respective variances only boosts his prior plan and testimony.
Do you agree to comply with any meeting, let's simple comments that I have in mind?
Yes.
So I recall from the last discussion, could you pull your sheet down so we can look and find elevation hazard? I recall some concerns in relation to the appearance of the home from the street and the overall size involved as it appears from the street. The majority of the square footage that you've removed is in the rear, it's not going to be evident. You did mention that you were pulling back the roof on the one side. Can you show us where you've added changes, different architectural elements to soften the size of the home when looking at it from the front?
Certainly, with the reduction of the two and a half feet off the rear across the hall piece, the overall peak of the house here has actually lowered down. The house, originally, we had it at thirty-one point one five, it is now going to be at thirty point five, so it has gone down a few inches because of us pulling that piece in. The, these two sides were what we really were trying to maintain, to balance the two pieces. It will obviously look much better if the two roofs were at the same height, but because we've removed so much of that side and pulled that side in from the rear on the second floor by thirteen foot eleven, it has significantly reduced, this ridge line has dropped down. The other ridge line on the other side has only dropped fractionally because we only took six inches off of the front by pushing it in. But we were trying to maintain the elements, we do love the way the house looks, it has a very beautiful inside. So ultimately, all we've done is lowered the roofs down slightly in order to make the backs of the house work.
Did you pull back the two corners on the second floor as well?
We only reduced them in front to back direction, not pull it inside to side.
Right, but you effectively set it back an additional six, only six inches.
This portion and that portion have reduced six inches. If we go any further, these windows would have to be changed to shorter windows, and it wouldn't be the balance that we have going across the whole front. So we were trying to maintain the same elevation, the same look, without this roof that comes up interfering with the window inside.
But originally, the entire facade of the second story was flat across?
No, we always had a job here, this was always back, I guess it was about a foot, now we're about eighteen inches back.
Nice. Any Board Members, something other questions for the Arctic?
Can you discuss the attic?
The attic is just a pull-down stair going up into the attic space at the very peak of the attic. Scale, can you give me the peak, actually? I can give you the height when we add it.
Once it's a pull-down, though, it's on that the half-story.
At the ridge itself, at the bottom of the ridge, it would be eight foot six in the attic space, and then it will start to slow down in either direction.
Thank you.
I believe we have shown it on the new plans, it was a question I brought up in the original. Would you show the attic stairs, pull-downs there in the hallway, so it will be pretty much dead center on the ridge, so we get the most height as you first get up the stairs to be able to put things into your attic?
Any other questions for the Arctic? Okay, Mr. Aiken, you're not going to call the planner again?
I'm just calling back, just to, just so we have very brief testimony.
Okay.
And it also asks Chairman, that you indulge me, since we have six, not seven, if you could possibly offer any comments from the Board before the formal voting, that would be greatly appreciated, since we're under the full Board.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Rizzo, applicant recalls Robert Hudak, licensed professional plumber. Does it lose any licenses, Mr. here?
No, I have not, Mr. Chairman.
God, there.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having me back. Again, like.
I'm sorry, this was this morning.
Yes, yes.
This was this morning.
Yes.
Thank you.
No, ultimately, like Mr. Aiken said, based on our revisions, what we've proposed tonight is an enhancement above and beyond what we had originally prepared for the Board. The reduction in the the overall size of the house results in us losing a number of variances, including the FAR cap variance we were previously seeking, so, and I stand by my testimony.
Excuse me, the floor area, not FAR.
The F A, I'm sorry, floor area, not the floor, the floor area cap, that's what I should have said, floor area cap, my apologies. It's been a long day. Be that as it may, again, it it only enhances what I had said before, that the property is in line with the current development trends in the neighborhood, that the site can clearly accommodate the issues associated with the larger FAR, as you've seen, we are creating a much more aesthetically pleasing home that fits in with the context in the neighborhood. And the rest, basically, as I had said before, with respect to the C variance relief that we had sought, a lot of it is a result of the size of the lot and the configuration of the homes, which is the parking, the front porch area. Again, the purpose of the municipal land use law are advanced, I talked about purpose A, general welfare, light air and open space, purpose C, the population density, purpose G, sufficient space for various uses, and purpose I, desirable visual environment, and with respect to negative criteria, I'll reiterate, there is no substantial detriment to the public good, nor to the zone plan and zoning ordinance as a result of this application.
Mr. Hudak, so we're pushing up against D variance, and three hundred and five square feet are at issue with regard to compliance. I think you said that the lot is particularly suited, maybe you didn't say particularly suited, I know that's term of art, for this house, that the lot effectively can handle this size house. The ordinances themselves indicate otherwise, so what what is it about the lot, what is it about this design, what is it about this that warrants a variance in light of the floor area ratio limitation?
I believe this lot is unique in that, as a corner lot already, typically corner lots are much larger, that's shown in your ordinance, this is a, this is a significantly undersized lot. The exhibit I had last month, if I may, this was exhibit A eleven, we introduced, showed the neighborhood pattern, and I did a review of the tax map, which isn't hundred percent accurate, however, it does show that our lot, which is located here in the center of A eleven, is smaller than the majority of the lots in the same zone, which is basically the south side of Wilk Street. And the majority of the houses, if you look at the yellow markings on A eleven, shows all of the two-story structures in the neighborhood, this is a five hundred foot radius from the property in question.
You said yellow markings, do you mean green markings?
Green markings, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, my mind's on football, I apologize, I'm the chain gang. Anyway, with respect to those green, those green markings, that is, those are the two-story structures. We are also adjacent to the R five zone, which allows much smaller lots, and as you can see, a majority of those are also two-story dwellings. So what we're proposing is in keeping in line with that. Also, this lot is unique because we back up to the park, which is not in the area that will be developed. So we, in in honesty, we do not have neighbors, if you will, directly adjacent to our property along three sides. We do have one neighbor on lot two, Oak Place, however, we do have a a landscape buffer between the properties already that exists. That's why I don't think there'll be any impediment to light air and open space with respect to lot two. And again, there is no direct neighbors, no immediate adjacent neighbors to the rear along. And again, there is no direct neighbors, no immediate adjacent neighbors in the rear along the walls and oak. So it's a different, it is unique in that sense, that's why it's been particularly suited. Mr. Chairman, I think I mentioned this at the last thing, the, the issue is that being an undersized corner lot, and while there are several structures there that had been renovated into two-story structures, and I think Mr. Shavetti pointed this out in our last meeting, was that most of those houses have a floating second floor, a much smaller second floor setback. They didn't plop a second floor around the top of the ridge, so therefore, it doesn't present the impact to the street. Being an undersized corner lot, and you're putting a second floor right on top of the first floor, I think it exceeds, I think it exacerbates the impact of the street because it's a corner lot and a ten thousand square foot corner lot at that. If you look at all the houses, if this lot, if this house were in an interior lot of R ten, ten thousand square feet, it would have, I think would have much less impact than that corner because it's specifically because it's a corner lot. If I may, we are depending the garage a little bit with Google on it, but that's really where the area that's adjacent to, and I'm referring to A seven, I believe it is, that is the area here that is adjacent to Willow Street, Oak Place. And the reason you typically want larger sized lots as your corner lots is because of the slight site triangle. So that you do not have any, any building within that site triangle, typically twenty five feet in the direction. Here, you already have an existing building that, for well or ill, already intruded into this existing front yard setback. We're not changing that at all. We already have a building here, and that's not where we're increasing on, we're providing for the addition, if you will. We're increasing over the interior portion. So that's why you typically have larger lots as corner lots, or we fire a larger corner lot. Here, we're not doing that. In addition, as the chairman pointed out, most of the square footage that we reduced is from the rear, so it has really no impact to the street. And I, I personally, if Mr. Aiken's just for some sort of color, I would have liked to have seen a little more pullback on those two side elevations, I understand the window thing, but if you're trying to reduce impact to the street on an undersized lot, I think that is where, that's where, if you want to talk, if you want to use the, the point that many houses have a second floor put on them, their second floors look quite a bit different than this. They're well undersized for the second side, you know, house immediately across the street and the one adjacent to it, I know that person, so. No, there are a number of houses, like I said, I did take a walk around the neighborhood here. I did see a number of the newer houses that were recently constructed, that are not, as you described, only a floating second floor. They had. No, they're not, but they're all branded construction. Conforming to construction, for the record, on Park Lane there, the gray one on the, no, damn, that's my house. Oh, I am well, I'm well aware of those houses on that street. And the only ones that came up for variances were ranches that had a second floor put on. We did one that's the interior corner on that street several years ago.
Is that?
That's significantly a pullback second floor, so it is pullback.
No, we did that in two.
Well, the porch was the second.
Yeah.
The second floor was constructed and we did the purple.
There was a porch that was added to the house after the second floor. And the, and the variance related to the porch, not the second floor.
Didn't need a variance for the second floor because it was not slab in line with the first floor.
Okay, like I said, I'm just talking about the fact that it.
I'm just saying, none of those houses that you have in green were subject to variance relief.
Nor is I insinuating that. I'm just simply saying that two-story houses are not out of the ordinary for that area.
Fair.
That's all I'm saying. But with respect to this lot, again, one of the smallest lots in the, in the zone in this particular area within that five hundred feet radius here.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm arguing it, and with respect to being a corner lot, because it is undersized, it creates certain challenges that we have to overcome. We're trying to do that in the best way we can.
I understand.
You can nip and tuck this house any way you want. Is it going to be a pretty house? Is it going to fit with the context of, you know, comfortable context of the neighborhood? Not necessarily. You can build anything you want, it could be hideously ugly though, and I think that goes against your public policy.
I think it looks good, I'm just worried that it's, it's, that there wasn't more of an effort to pull those, pull anything on the street.
I think, I think the architect's testimony, though, Mr. Chesey, is important, right? So what he said was that if, if, if these corners get pulled back more, then the heights of the windows get reduced.
Understand.
And then you don't have the symmetry that's been produced across the facade. So I think that's a consideration, I think a consideration, because, because it's not just taking, you know, one level and stacking it on the other, right? We have got a difference of about a hundred and fifty square feet, you know, plus or minus. Between, you know.
I just wonder if the, if the foot setback is going to be recognizable, if, you know, if I look at it from the street, can I tell that that second, that those two sides are pushed, pushed in a foot? I don't know.
Well, there.
It's hard to see from a flat perspective.
It, it, it's, it is hard to see, from the, from the plan view, you see that the, that the, that the facade is broken at the corners. And so it does bring the eye in, I think, from that perspective. The other thing that's important, I think, is that the applicant tried to fill in the porch, the front porch that's existing. Remember, we're not working with a clean palette, we're working with something that was created sixty, seventy years ago, and trying to reconcile that fairly with current design as well as limitations of the ordinance on an undersized lot. And so that's what we heard, you know, from, from the board at the July meeting, and that's why we made these, these revisions. You know, eliminating several of the variances along the way, principle of which was the floor area cap.
No, go stand here with the ratio.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you want to add, I believe, if you look at this front elevation drawing, this is A seven, you will see the differentiation here. So when you're coming at the power from Willow Street, you wouldn't be able to see that. A seven, A seven.
A seven A.
A seven A.
A seven A, yes.
That's just A one values from.
Yes, correct, right.
Okay.
You will see some differentiation. It's hard, like you said, it's hard to even pull on a flat piece of paper, see a 3D picture, which you will see the differentiation. And again, it's interior of the lot. This is really the area where I was concerned about with respect to the front door setbacks. Because of that site triangle, what's the existing elevation of the existing garage? I know it doesn't have a Google on it now, what's the, do we know?
I have the existing garage.
The, the height.
This is the existing entity. The roof is still the same, we follow what's there.
It's the same, but you put that hip.
We're putting the hip, we're cutting it back, and then putting a Google on the top.
So the ridge height doesn't change.
That's correct. Your question, if you can see it from the corner, these are all older render, render, renderings that we did. I have not revised them, so the only difference is this down foot, but in general, and this piece here is pushed back in an additional six inches. But you can clearly see the delineation in it, when you look at it as.
You have the, the front from the. I think you can see on the front.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this is, this is an older version that's twelve inches setback versus eighteen inch.
That's correct, yes, so these two portions of the house will be pushed back in addition to that. As you can see in our original, our original drawings, our original rendering, the two ridges were very nearly at the same point on the two sides, so this ridge is now going to be down, lower. Because of the fact that we took thirteen and a half, or thirteen point eleven.
And explain to me why you couldn't, because I, I'm looking at the new, actually have your old plan here, and then I look at the new one, and you can, it's more pronounced than the new one, the difference in the ridge heights from left to right.
Correct.
Why couldn't you make them equal?
Uh, in order to make them equal, then we would have to take this side and cut it back as well, or change the pitches. And when you start changing the pitches, it starts to look a little bit odd. I mean, you can make them all match, but you change the pitch, you lower one side down, the eve line gets larger, if you're trying to maintain a gutter line that's uniform all the way through. And it just, it would look odd by having a much larger eve line on one side than on the other.
So I just want to clarify, I don't think the rub is the existence of the second floor. The ordinances permit the second floor. So I think the rub is the three hundred and five square feet, and whether or not there's an intersection between how the house is going to present to the front and from the side, you know, this is a corner, so you effectively have two fronts and the three hundred and five square feet. If you didn't have the three hundred and five square feet, your building is a matter of right. And so the question for the board is whether or not the board feels as though that intersection is problematic, or whether it is something we can accommodate given the existing hardship in relation to the existing home in the lot. Okay, Mr. Hudak, anything further?
Unless you have any questions at this point.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, and just asked, you know, any feedback from the board, appreciate Mr. Chesney's comments.
We're going to vote, and then we'll have some discussion. Okay, so nothing further from you now?
Nothing further at this time, Jim.
Are there any members in public that have any comments or questions with regard to the Goodwin application? Like directly, like no. Okay. So you have nothing further, Mr. Aiken?
Nothing further.
Okay. To the board, Mr. Aikens has requested that we have some discussion in light of the fact that we're one member short. The application before you requires a D variance, only one variance to the relative floor area ratio. And so I'm interested in hearing what people think as regard to what's been presented.
I, I think I've said.
Mr. Shavetti?
I think there's a distinction made in the planning testimony that this would fit in with the character of the neighborhood as it is developing, as opposed to the character of the neighborhood as it is. That's my distinction out of that second part there. You know, you talk about the neighborhood, and honestly, in, in my eye, the neighborhood for this is the contiguous block on. And, you know, that portion of Willow there, across the street on Willow, there's two-story houses, but they are significantly older than this piece of development here. You know, narrow, almost cottage-type properties that are two-story. Directly across the street, and on the same side of the street all the way to the end of the block are ranches. There are two properties on the far side of the street on that block that have second floors, as Mr. Chesby was commenting, those are both floated significantly in from the first floor footprint. So they, they really hit more like a ranch than a, than a two-story house, not, not even like, I don't know, my opinion on that. I, I feel like that's really the neighborhood and the, the character that this property falls into. The comment that there's no neighbor to the west. And then it's surrounded on two sides by streets and not neighbors. Throws it a little bit because those areas are all really pretty high-traffic areas for town because of the school that's there, the park that's there, hundreds of people go by this house every morning and every afternoon, and see this every morning and afternoon on their way to and from the school to and from the park. I, I think this will be significantly more noticeable from the park, certainly significantly more noticeable from the corner for the vehicle traffic and the pedestrian traffic. I understand it's a lot, I understand it's undersized. And I understand that meets the cap, that the cap is something that is there to deal with oversized lots where they're not coming near the floor area ratio. I can appreciate that they pulled some things in here and there to bring it under the cap. But on a, on a lot that's smaller than it's required to be, the cap to me is not the, the operative limit, the ratios, the. And as was stated before, I mean, the bulk of, the bulk of the bulk that was reduced was to the back, it's not going to be seen from Willow Street or from Oak Place. Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's to an extent of my thoughts on, on the matter.
Can I just make a comment, and, and thanks, Alfred, kind of trouble I remember. We are tasked and hear all the time about two big houses on two small lots, isn't it? And where it makes sense, we great relief. But shoot, the, the uniqueness of a lot being how highly visible it is because of the school there, because of the amount of traffic that goes past every day, will, I, I just, or given the visibility of it and the, the invaluable comments that you're going to hear, wow, how did they get, how that house get passed? Well, because technically, you know, the square footage, they cut up in the back, so it's still, but I really would have liked, would like to see more enough to get below that. The thirty one percent, the floor area ratio, given that's an undersized lot, given the visibility of a lot, given that people can say, oh, look, another big house going on a smaller. And to echo what, what you said, I know, oh, we eliminated the thirty two twenty cap, the thirty two twenty exists for oversized lots. It really is not the cap, the cap is twenty, or this lot. Nothing further to me.
I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with you two, and I, and I actually would have liked to have seen, I guess I can't really picture how it would be a detriment had we had two smaller, if the two, two second-story windows on either side, on the right and the left, were smaller, it'd still have a symmetry in my mind, not necessarily five across symmetry, but still symmetry on left and right. It might have shrunk it to so that the, the front would feel less of a mass. It's, it's reminding me of the other lot that we talked about on, on Third Avenue Road and Third Streets, the same idea with the, with the light and the air and the open space and, and so many people walking by and driving by in that area, that it's going to feel like a significant change, so those are also my concerns. I really appreciate the, the efforts made to pull it in to, to avoid the need to take down the tree in the back. I appreciate all of those. I just was thinking maybe if it had more of an impact on the street scape, it would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Consell.
I wish there was a neighbor who can testify, because I'd like to hear what their thoughts were about this. But I do, I agree with this, D'Angelo, that, you know, you could change those windows and make them a little smaller and keep the symmetry of the house. You know, you have considerably changed the design to get closer to where we need to be, but it's a big house on a small lot. You know, back to Mr. Shavetti's point that, you know, the context of the neighborhood, I go through this neighborhood and I'm frankly, you know, there, there used to be ranches there, the ranches are going away. Ranches are very popular in the fifties and the sixties, you know, that's where you want to live, in a ranch. People don't want to live in ranches anymore. So we do need to take into consideration, we're going to have second floors in these neighborhoods, but you know, to all the point, this is a possibly one of the most trafficked corners in the town. With the schools and the park, we have the farmer's market there now, a number of weeks in that general vicinity. So that's my concern too, what is the impact then visually? Because there are some houses that were tear downs in this general vicinity that you go by and it's you know, you get taken aback by it slightly. So those are. Yeah, no, I know, you, you look next to one. So we, you know, you need to find the balance then. So we, you know, you need to find the balance then between, you know, a ranch doesn't work in two thousand and twenty-four, but how do you make it work within the neighborhood? Um. You know, we have big houses, we don't want big houses on little lots, but I do like the effort that you are putting in to. You know, renovate the house and kind of. Within. The overall wishes of the town and the master plan. I just. I'm just echoing the concerns, I guess is the best way to put it. Without double too further deep into it.
Dr. Lott?
I'm really torn because you, you've uh, you've done a lot of work to make this work a more, actually, and uh. And, and yet I understand the uh. Uh, the overall concern. I, I, I really wish the bulk of this house could be more into the rear than uh, than on the front, the street side. Uh. And other than that, I don't have anything else there.
I would like to add, just follow up. Um, you know, I really do appreciate what you guys have done. Um, it just. You know, this is really kind of a unique spot.
It's difficult because as the setback goes, the second floor is within the setback. But it's. The size of the second floor is the problem and not the setback itself.
And the rear of the house is already established and it just happens to be established, not close to the, you know, the setback.
No, understood.
So, so again, those are existing conditions, not of the applicant's creation. Yeah.
Yeah, look, I, I think the issue is the three hundred and five square feet and, and how does it intersect with the design? I, I, there's no question as I look at it. That it's a beautiful house, the house itself fits in very. It's, it's very, very nice. And on a different lot, there's no question that we'd all be proud to own it, live in it, live next to it. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is the rub between where you are relative to the floor area ratio and the, the, the feeling of bulk from the front. Um, you, you have it from the side too, but there's, there's greater limits in terms of what you can do with that. And so I think we're not really focusing on it. Um, but. It, it, it's all about those square feet. And when we come up against these limits, these are real hard limits that we need to really think carefully about. Um. And I think it's unfortunate that with the reduction that you've made in the square footage. That we haven't wound up with a feeling from the street of a softening. Um, of it. And it's, it's, it's a shame because I, I don't think anybody up here would argue that thirty-one hundred is too big in terms of a lot in an R ten zone. Uh, the issue is the accommodation of, of the house by the law. And, and I think what, I think what we're struggling with is, is just that issue.
I also, I like the couple of Mr. Kansasani because he got away from the nested gables that we see from a certain architect whose name shall be named in this all over the riverous. Uh, um, and it looks a hell of a lot better than that. It's just.
So Chairman, with that, may I have five minutes to confer with my client?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. What do we have for admin? Anything?
I would find my. Quickly, administrative item one, administrative item, uh, approval resolution Ryan nine one seven River Row. Uh. Having read the resolution, I would make a motion to approve the resolution that's.
For time?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, you weren't here, right?
Uh, Mr. Sheba?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yeah. Um, that's the only thing I'll get you into. She lead, do you? The minutes from October ten?
No, I was gonna put that because.
Okay.
I'll put on the next, uh, regular, regularly.
Oh, that's all I have. All right, just give it a few minutes then.
You can.
It did. Not talk that one. We're just on the record now. Why's there no self coverage compared to?
No, that's.
It is better than uh.
Booty man, chips, is there Wi-Fi?
All branch.
There's Wi-Fi here, yeah.
I didn't want.
Yeah. I guess so, but. You know, the only way I can make calls from.
Is that right? I'm like, wow, that, that was, we're never seeing.
Wow. I, it's just also black hole.
There's a new thing with Verizon that I did when I changed my phone, I, I guess I was on some like antiquated plans. Where it was like dirt cheap, they don't offer it anymore. So I went up like five bucks a line, I'm going home, share wideband, I don't know if you guys get that? It says UW next to it.
No.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a game changer because before that I was like. Like I can't get service.
They've been trying to give me the change. Right here, what do you have Verizon?
Yeah, I got Verizon, there's like this thing now you can add like, at least for whatever I had, the unlimited, it was like someone wanted to create a plan, the guys like, the five bucks more, you go on this ultra wideband. And you get it now and shows five G UW and it's a game changer. Not just if you want to watch your videos, but like to actually use.
Oh, I have that.
Oh, yes. You want your wife already on brand?
She. She's been on eight days, I forgot.
Trying to get.
I'm sure I can do that. I took the paper.
They don't.
Proud of existing customers. You gotta complain.
New phones. Now, but here's the thing though, the, the guy in the store is the guy, we gotta work great. Says. On this plan.
Yeah.
Two lines. Is a hundred and ten dollars, fifty-five bucks. He says, on the same plan, four lines. Was a hundred and twenty dollars. He says, we give you two new lines and you take the new phones from those and put them on the lines with the heavier numbers. And just. Those other two, there's a lot of stuff there, I need this. Your burner phones.
Well.
You know, you need to bug out. Oh, wait, no, no.
Wait, hang on there. Facebooks. Yeah.
See, I'm.
Nelson, anyone's just too nice.
I'm gonna take comfort right now and. Should we shut this off?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna take a five minute.
Um, Mr..
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Yes. Here. Here. Uh, Mr. Akins, you have for a break, uh, we finished that parade, uh, I think that the board had discussed. Their feelings about the application and you had asked to press a pause.
Thank you, Chairman, I did, board members, and I'd ask at this time that the board carry the matter so that the applicants can further consider the board's comments. I know how busy your agenda is and uh, just doing some quick math, right? The next regularly scheduled meeting is the fourteenth. Which would mean revision, plan revisions would have to be in by the first of November, that's nine, nine days. I don't think that's especially realistic.
So put you to December? Potential?
It was already carried one December.
Sure, what's the uh, current agenda for December?
So, uh, December, we have the board application, the Gil application, and we did Carrie Nelson. But I need to confirm with Mr. Bronski if we're gonna uh, continue with that because the applicant did come in and talk to me about submitting a new. Zoning permit application to build a complaint.
Okay, so. So we have two on, one carried that may not be heard, anything else?
No.
Okay. Um. The applicant's been uh, working on this a long time. Um, I think that if we move you to the, is it December the fifth?
December fifth.
Uh, we'll figure out how to hear it on December. So that.
Don't further notice him.
Yeah, no, I, I kind of feel strongly about notice.
No. Anybody wants to be noticed, it's gonna be a plus.
Yeah, I agree with him. So uh, I'll make a motion to carry the good one application to the December fifth meeting with no obligation to renotice and a stipulation on the app. Uh, the applicants of an extension of our time to add.
So stipulate, Chairman.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Walker?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Akins.
Thank you, Mr. John.
Don't go far.
No, no.
Uh, next application on tonight is the Nelson application. Chairman, may I, I'm sure enough on you, but. That's. So it's the first one. That's one. The one on the left. The one on the left. The, 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 the second one. Second level. Oh, there. And it's also. Any books that we have stored. Their friends are mine, it's important, it's important, I don't want to make a sense, but.
Oh, that's where you.
Great, thank you for talking about it. What's that?
Yeah, the snakes you.
I don't want you to show.
I'll let you know. Look at you. Look at you. Almost got hit by a.
It's because they're so quiet. I should have you extra package.
I didn't even do that.
Yeah, just for here, right? And I already mined that on four, I don't know why.
Much, much more than.
But I did not.
Oh, you know, that'd be very remote. Maybe whistle.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Akins, you're back?
We're back.
Okay, uh, we're, we've been on the record the whole time? Yeah. Before I take, find a seat, go ahead and start with the Nelson application. So just like to establish jurisdiction in this matter?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Covert. Evening Chairman, Board Members, again, Mark Akins on behalf of the applicant's Keith Patricia Nelson. Uh, ladies and gentlemen. This is an application.
Do you want to mark exhibits at this point? For.
I want to run into the check with science here. Sure, that'd be fine. I'll do my intro after the exhibits, that's fine.
They'll remember.
That's fine.
Uh. With your permission, Mr. Akins, I'd like to mark A one, the attorney cover letter of January twenty twenty twenty-four. A two will be the zoning board application guidelines plus the addendum. The O two, A three will be the completed land development checklist. A four will be the zoning office denial letter of December twenty first, twenty twenty-three. A five is the images, one sheet for images on it. A six will be the survey prepared by more engineering survey dated um, six twenty-six, twenty-three. A seven will be the signed sealed architectural plans, additions and operations, uh, inclusive of floor plans. And elevations revised to August twenty twenty-four. Uh, A eight will be the response letter of the architect. Uh. Matthew Cronin, April fifth, twenty twenty-four. ZB one will be the Fairhaven Historic Preservation Commission's memorandum of action. Leave that referencing a meeting of November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, date of the memo appears to be October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. ZB two is the uh, CME engineering report, March twelve, twenty twenty-four, on the secret floor of the newsroom. ZB three will be the CME engineering report, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, in the center of the signature majority newsroom. I leave that. Um, unless you have addition. Back in tomorrow?
I'll have some of the markets, Mr. Cronin goes along.
Okay, so we're up to eight and nine then, when we get there.
Eight nine, so no, thank you.
Mr. Cruz, or anything?
Mr. Chair, there are a few checklist requirements. Um, first one is elevations of all sides of the structure. Now, they provided three sides on the elevations, the one side they didn't provide, they're not making any modifications to, and they provided photo of the existing conditions. So I don't take exception to that. And then the, the last three are the notice, uh, to be published in the paper, um, board has jurisdiction, so that's the new. And then the Montana County Plan Board and Montana County Health Department applications, which um, appear to be non-legal, so I don't take any exception.
Any questions about the photo, whatever?
No.
Okay, second, Mr. Akins.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so ladies and gentlemen, this is an application, uh. On behalf of Keith and Tricia Nelson, property is located twenty-eight B Gillespie Avenue, it's in the R ten zone. Um, it's a fairly significantly undersized lot at six thousand three hundred and thirty-six square feet. It's actually a nineteen thirty era cottage, one of two built in this neighborhood. Uh, which was originally designed as a wedding chapel and used for wedding of the estate owner's daughter. The cathedral space over the living room uh, is approximately three hundred and fifty-one square feet. Property now fronts on Captain's Point Way, which is actually a private road. House and property appear however, and function as though it were on an improved public street. And it's a typical single family house on an improved public street. We have some existing non-conformities, uh, there's one for four area ratio where we're at point three four. We're proposing to increase that to point three nine by three hundred and seventeen square feet. And lot coverage is presently non-conforming at forty-five point one percent. We're proposing to go to forty-six point seven. Uh, percent, that is uh, the equivalent of a hundred and one square feet. Um, so this would allow a proposed third bedroom on the second floor. Uh, with a study and bathroom on the first floor. And at the same time, we would be removing a one and one half story portion of the existing residence on the west side of the house. Uh, there's currently a rear yard setback variance due to the proposed lot depth of fifty-two feet, very shallow lot, not surprisingly. Uh, and the proposed addition, including demolition of that portion that I just referenced on the west wing. We believe would better balance the house aesthetically, especially from the streetscape perspective. Lastly, the front yard existing condition to the house is twenty feet. We propose twenty-nine point one feet where thirty feet is required, so just a little bit less than a one foot deviation there on the variance. Um, and with me this evening, uh, are Matthew Cronin, licensed architect, as well as Robert Hudek, licensed professional planner. So I'd ask at this time, Mr. Kovas, they both please be sworn, and I'll place their credentials on the back.
Anyone testifying in this manner has to stand with you. You know, so swear in front of the testimony, give the board the truth, the whole truth, that's about the truth.
I do.
I do, I do. Okay, I would ask that before you start testifying, that you state your name and the records following your last name. Thank you.
Matthew Cronin, C R O N I N.
And Mr. Cronin, uh, good evening, do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Uh, we, we, we can start. Mr. Cronin, you lost any licenses since you uh, were last approved by the board?
I have not.
Okay, actually, Mr. Hudek, have you lost any licenses in the last time, man?
No.
Okay, we're gonna speculate as to qualifications, Jerry.
Thank you, Chair. Great. All right, Cronin, what can you tell the board about the proposed application of the Nelsons? Let's mark them, A eight, A nine now.
A nine is a handout that the Nelsons put together, but it explains the existing house and some history of the house that we'll be going over.
They have a copy.
Mr. Ray just mentioned the house is a was built in the early thirties. And it's in what we call the Tudor style, which is, is a which is typified by stucco walls, steel roofs, dark trim, wide overhands, and low roof baron. So it's, we are at twenty eight B Gillespie. And you were going to mention the wedding chapel.
I did, in my intent by free remarks.
All right, yes.
Okay, so if I have the proposed elevation, but you can part with that.
So let's mark this now as A ten.
This is a rendered copy of the sheet that was divided to the board that was submitted.
Rendered copy of the elevations, previously submitted, A ten. Okay.
The house is really separated into three different volumes, as you can see in the photographs in the in the handout. There's a center, a large center mass that's a full two stories. Then there is a low mass that is one story with a large cathedral space. And then currently, there's another low kind of short mass that is that gradient level to the to the left of the house, we believe that that immediately was the garage with storage above. And those floors do not line up with the floors of the house. The floor actually there is, is wood sitting at grade, it's not separated from the grade terribly well. We have really done it to see if there's any insulation. So the existing house is you, you enter the, the center mass, and I've got the, does the plan here? You enter the existing portion of the house, and there's a large open living dining, living dining kitchen, great room kind of room in the center of the house, which was opened up by Nelsons in the last five years. Then there is the large, as Martin mentioned, wedding chapel room, the cathedral space over on the left side with a large fireplace. And then there are down three risers, there's a small study with a bathroom and laundry. I'm sorry, a bathroom and some storage. And then up the stairs, which are tinier than required today. You get to the top and there are, there's a master suite with the closet over top of the left mass and a hall bath and a second bath. So right now, it's really a two bedroom house with three bathrooms.
I'm sorry, so there's two bedrooms upstairs?
Yes. There are two bedrooms, there's access to the, the space over the left area there, which is the closet and laundry for the master. There's no other closet in the master.
The vaulted ceiling on the right side of the house, if you're looking at it from the front. Is there square footage calculated into the size and your measurements based on the vaulted ceiling?
Yes, there are. We went through that with Mr. Rizzo, and the numbers that we show are correct.
So what's the end result of the vaulted space that isn't actually habitable space?
And three hundred and fifty one square feet over the top of the cathedral space is counted towards the floor area.
My second question relates to the configuration of the house now to the private road. What was the original configuration? Was there a private lane or something? And do we now have vested rights to use the private street, the, the new road that's been cut off the last week?
I believe there was, there was an easement to the.
There was, there was a subdivision, I believe, that to the south and east of this property. And as a result, Captain's Point Way was created. And the private, the private drive had served this property has been abandoned. And now there's a, in essence, a curb cut onto Captain's Way.
Okay, so the house now fronts onto the new road.
It does.
And there's legal rights to access the home.
There is.
And there's no other current access to get to Gillespie but for.
But for that.
Correct.
But for Captain's Point Way, that's correct, Chair.
Mr. Cronin, the, the, that, that number for the vaulted ceiling that we counted, what was that number again, three fifty?
Three fifty one.
There's a line shown on the plan that shows where the thirty inch line is.
Yeah, my plan's too massive, I can't quite open the box.
You can see it on Mr. Cronin's plan right there.
Yeah.
On the second floor.
So the, we propose to remove the, the left side, the small mass on the left side.
I'm sorry, before you do that, what, what is the square footage of the house that exists, please?
Had to exist, and this is, I found it typo on the, on the chart. I the chart on this one shows one thousand and seventy square feet for the second floor, it is actually one thousand and seventy eight. So I can hand out the corrected. Last.
That includes three fifty one.
So that's a eleven.
Yes.
And what's the combined square footage of the existing structure?
Uh, thank you. The existing structure is twenty one seventy four.
Yeah, that's what I calculated, also. Did you have, you say one thousand seventy eight square feet on the first floor?
Uh, one thousand seventy on the second floor, ten ninety six on the first floor.
That's what I asked.
And so we intend to remove one ninety five off of each floor, which is the existing left mass there. And we intend to add three hundred and forty one point six square feet to each floor for a net increase of a hundred and forty six point six per floor or two ninety three point two. The proposed totals end up at one thousand two hundred and forty two point six for the first floor and one thousand two hundred and twenty four point six for the second floor for a total of twenty four sixty seven point two and an F A R of point three nine.
Is that without the cathedral ceiling?
That counts, that's counting a cathedral ceiling.
With the cathedral, okay, so without it. We're two one one six point two, is that correct?
Um, you'd have to back out three fifty one.
Okay, all right, so, all right, that's the number.
Whatever that calculation.
Two one one six point two.
Thank you. I just want to say to the boards, I'm going to be referencing my second review letter, T B three. The four area ratio and four area numbers to half are a little bit different. I am in agreement with the numbers that have been shown tonight on this exhibit. There have been a number of iterations, and so we ended up at two thousand four hundred and sixty seven square feet for the floor area and a zero point three nine four area ratio. So point three five four is not. So existing is zero point three four two.
Oh, okay.
And proposed is zero point three nine.
So what we intend to do, like I said, is to remove the, the left mass and add the larger three hundred and forty one square foot addition that will be built at the first floor level. We would have the same entrance to it, a full depth, whether you, a full depth, it says it's a small study. Open to a side family entry door and patio like that, and then a small mudroom off in the corner. We put stairs coming up to a guest room over top of the, the addition there, where we will grab a piece of the addition for the walk-in closet for the master and put a laundry in the corner. What we intend to do with the elevations is carry on some of the, some of the detailing that we, that we see in the existing house, the existing main body of the house. The, the wall that the roofs are sitting on is, that roofs bear on is six foot six. It's not the traditional eight foot for a second floor and, and a half. We are proposing six feet in our addition so that we can set the roofs down just a little bit from the existing ridge and try to keep the mass of the house down. We then show a dormer similar to the existing dormer on the front of the house with a front facing window for the bedroom. The existing home really isn't touched at all. And then on the side, we show a side door, three high windows for light coming in, a window at the stairs. And then at the rear, just a small window at the stairs and no other windows because we're three feet from the property line.
So what are the dimensions of the piece that you're taking off?
It is.
It's a hundred and ninety five square feet, but what?
Ten foot eight by eighteen four.
So it's eighteen feet from the side of the drive and nine foot wide. And the footprint of the proposed replacement addition is?
Seventeen eight one by nineteen forty.
Where's the extra depth going to go? To the rear?
To the front.
To the front. It actually improves the new setback, doesn't it?
Slightly, yeah.
It improves the rear, well, we're, the rear setback is counted to the cantilever from the existing, over the existing second floor. We're aligning with the first floor. And then you, you can see here that we are coming out about a foot from the existing mass that we're removing. We are twenty nine, twenty one, where thirty is required to the front. But we figured this is about as small as we can go, we didn't want to go further back, so. And we're still several feet behind the existing mass of the house, we didn't think it would be that problematic.
And there's a considerable distance to the side.
There is, we are twenty foot six from the porch to the side property line.
Which is, which is substantially buffering, which has.
What, what's the delta on the, on the left side of the house?
What's the, the difference in the?
The difference, the difference in size of the left side of the house. If you're removing something, you're adding something else, what's the overall change?
We're adding about seven feet to the house, and then we're adding three feet for the porch, so the overall distance on the numbers is ten foot as far as the setback goes, because the existing house doesn't have a, that doesn't have a step, it just, it doesn't have a porch, it just has a step to grade.
And are you still needing the, that, that setback, that side yard setback?
The side yard setback is ten, we're in twenty point two.
It's a generous side yard setback, and it's buffering.
Mr. Ray, can what's, what is the nature of the easement to the private drive? Do they have, I mean, who maintains the law between them and the street, private street?
So, so my understanding is that the applicant maintains it right up to the right of way.
I think if that's the applicant, she may want to speak.
Yeah.
Why don't I have a report?
Swear you in.
Okay. You solemnly swear that we're upon the testimony, you give the truth, the whole truth, talking about the truth. That's a yes.
Yes, yes.
There you go. And I just spell your last name for purpose of the record.
Uh, Nelson, N E L N, okay.
Okay.
Don't be shy, right here.
Okay. So I, I wasn't really asking you with Molly Malone, I was asking you with the legal right to use that property. The reason I'm asking is because it's apparent that nobody really has the ability to use it the way you do. It's substantial amount of property, given the size of your lot, and I'd like to take it into consideration. The fact people of law is appreciated, thank you. But does the easement give you the right to use it? Does it, is it effectively your front yard?
No, it gives me the right to use the drive.
Okay.
But I, I, in all essence, because I maintain the property, it appears to be by credit law, but it's legally not.
And is it used for any other purpose, to your knowledge?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is, is there a shed between the left side of the property and the and, and the boundary?
Yes, there is. There's a shed, an existing shed on the left property line.
Is it right on the lines?
It is right on the side yard line and six feet in from the rear.
Now. Is, is that considered, are you considering the shed in terms of that side yard setback? Where does that shed fit into that side yard setback?
It's an accessory side yard setback.
It's an accessory side yard, which would be required to be
It's an existing.
Five, it would be required to be five feet, but it's existing condition at zero.
And, and what's, what's the, the distance between the left side of the house and that shed?
The proposed existed, there's not, it's twenty two sixteen, right? Twelve feet to the steps and it's about fifteen and a half to the house. Existing proposal. Close to the book.
So the crosshatched area on that drawing is the addition. The next box to the left is your patio and then your, your shed is there.
Yes.
If that shed legally is, I think, a permit that I checked.
I'm going to guess it's been there a long time, Chairman. Yeah, I'm going to guess that, that it predates.
My question is the distance from the proposed condition of that side of the house to the shed.
It is, it is about sixteen feet. Not including the, the steps.
About fifteen and a half.
For the wall, not for the steps.
Can I have a check? Go it off.
It's about ten by ten.
There a picture of the shed?
It's, if you look at page two of exhibit A ten, you can see it just in the middle of the frames.
Kind of right.
Like a little white, a white little check.
I have it a little bit too on page seven of my report. So, again, it's pretty smart.
Yeah. I'll just pop it up there. So Mr. Hudek has an exhibit and aerial that may be of assistance to help locate the shed. Should we mark that as A twelve?
Eight twelve.
We have an eleven.
A eleven I have is the zoning chart.
The zoning directly.
Eight twelve.
Eight twelve.
Yeah. So he's giving me the actual data in the area. We have the data back, Hudek, please?
Yes, it's prepared today. I'm sorry, ten eleven twenty four. Ten eleven twenty four aerial of the Nelson residence and surrounding neighborhood. Eight twelve.
Okay.
And, and is there testimony that the shed predates on it? Is that what we're going to look?
I have to ask the applicant, Chair.
Yeah.
Eric?
Mr. Nelson? Hi, Mr. Nelson, come back up. Chairman has a question on the shed.
Okay, there was a shed, I replaced it with a new shed. So what does that mean?
Did you get a permit for it?
No. You need a gun for a shed?
You do. You do.
Okay, now we're to the bottom of the shed.
Okay, we got the facts out on the shed.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, please continue.
We uh. We did go to the uh. As you see with the uh historic um. Preservation committee memo. We did go to them two years ago and their memo. Mentioned that the. They agreed that the full condition is consistent with the integrity of the original structure and will balance the overall scale of same um. The one change that they requested. Was we originally had a row of windows on the stairs. They thought that was too modern looking and they asked us to reduce it and we came back with just the one window on the stairwell. You don't have to re- resubmit to them, so we're just, but there was discussion that this was an acceptable solution. Or would be an acceptable solution.
Were there uh requirements in the letter from the architectural uh committee with regard to um? Materials? And are you stipulating as to using the materials they're part? Did you present to them perhaps materials and did they agree that those are the right materials?
We presented that we would uh remain consistent with materials with the. Difference that we would probably be using some sort of a cop composite or PVC trap versus the painted wood.
If I may, the language says as a result, it unanimously approved. The application insofar as the existing finish together with the gutters and downspouts will remain consistent with that which is existing. In addition, the applicant agreed to omit the top vertical window depicted on the west side elevation. And reconfigure it so that the proposed two by six window will become a two by four case with window. I think that's the only. That's all I see, Mr. Cronin.
Just for the record, just so the record's clear, what are the materials currently and proposed? Let's go, let's go walls and rooms, windows, just the house, it's currently a hard coat stucco which appeared to be original.
We propose this to match that, both the material and um texture and color. Uh the windows are uh black. Wood frames, uh the trim, the window trim is black wood frame, we would. Again, mimic the size and the color, but we would use a a more modern material. The windows have been swapped down since the Nelson moved there, but we would match the the uh window grills. For the mountains and mountains as shown here. And uh the roof is a black. Asphalt shingle roof, we would. Match that. And the 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 chimney and the porch in brick with uh slate. Um with slate uh treads, we would match that on our side porch there.
And so it's your testimony that those materials and colors? Would meet the requirements of the approval granted a year ago by the Historic Preservation Commission for.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I have no further questions, uh Mr. Cronin, Chairman.
Chris, uh Cronin, what what about the pedestrian in the rear to the addition as I'm looking at it, you've got a single window on that side? Otherwise, you're just plain wall, what's the the rationale behind that, is that all staircase?
We're, it, there's a lot of stairs here, you can you can see it, uh I don't know. Uh it's dotted in there, but it's also, we're right up on the property line.
And there's a fence there too.
There's a fence right behind us, so we're three feet off and there are some restrictions, I mean, I I could get a window in there, but there's really no reason to add a window up there.
Does does no one see that side of the house?
It's right up on a.
No, it's right up the area.
That side of the house is right up on the fence, on the property line with block thirty five there. And um there's a six foot fence already there. The upper eve is kind of low, so we really wouldn't be putting a window there, we would have to add a dormer to add a second floor window. And it didn't seem to make sense. Uh and on the first floor, I would love, we got the window in the bathroom, but. We're, like I said, we're.
We're moved to the property line.
Three foot nine to the fence.
We're three foot nine to the fence.
Are are you saying that you're prohibited from doing that because the building code with regard to a window that close to a property boundary?
I could get a window in the bathroom if. If there's a little bit of logic and a little bit of safety with the with the fire code.
Yeah, there's no, it's never, I recall this from several years ago on a house that was right on a property line that that there's a fire code that you can't have.
There there were different increments, under five feet, you can have ten percent. Under three feet, you can't really have. Under three feet to zero, you really can't have any and you have to have um. Uh basically gypsum sheeting on the outside of the house, the house has to be protected from the outside as well as the inside. Because you have no control over what's two feet away from your house or three foot nine away from your house.
So why didn't you put the the window in the bathroom?
It, with the fence there, it just didn't seem like it made sense.
In the window in the bathroom?
Because you would be looking out at the fence.
You would be looking out at the fence, we are close to the property line, right?
This is the first lawyer, Frank Better.
Yes.
Did H P C ask you to revisit that issue?
H P C was really just concerned with what they could see through the street. And we added this, the the window in the stairwell. After we. Got their their response just because we wanted to get more light into the more light into the house.
The one facing the last.
The one, the window facing the the rear of the house. The window, the only window we have here, here, the window on the stairwell.
Oh, okay.
Again, to orient everybody, that's the north side of the house, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the um the second story in the in the middle, is that cantilever in this direction?
It is, two feet.
And the proposed addition is gonna be flush with the first one?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, anything further, Mr. Cronin?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cronin, um applicant now calls Robert Hudak, licensed professional planner. Uh Chairman, I would note that um. I'm advised that only a lawnmower is stored in the shed and it is not in central shed for purposes of the applicant's use of the property.
There's no garage or other exterior storage.
There is not, this is that could be relocated. Could be done away.
Where would it be relocated to?
There's not a lot of options.
Move it five feet, you could move it down to ten feet between the new addition and the shed.
Yeah.
If you remove it, who's gonna move it along? But the the fence is six feet and the height of the shed is fifteen fifteen feet, so. Your your ne- your neighbor is looking at the uh.
I think it's just, I don't think it's fifteen feet.
Well, that's what it said, it says the existing structure. It's fifteen feet.
Let's let's, just so we're clear, I don't think that, respectfully, I don't think that's the uh. Shed is fifteen feet. Miss Mead, can you come back up? For the um. Just give us some dimensions on.
Yeah, it's seventy, seventeen.
Okay. Does have two bicycles in it.
No, nice.
One lawnmower, two bikes.
Less than fifteen feet.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So this flexibility from the applicant's standpoint in all sincerity as to the shed, we don't want the shed to be. Whacking the dogs, so to speak, to totally fix that.
Is the shed on a concrete pad?
No. Not a lot.
Was it delivered?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hudak. Do you possess any licensing state?
Yeah, I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey.
Isn't it, you were qualified just moments ago as an expert before this very board?
Matter of fact, I was, yes.
Can I actually throw in that for fun, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. I want to jump right into this because I think we've hit on some of the major points involved in this application, this is severely undersized lot. In a very unique location is seen on exhibit A as well. Because it is located. In essence, without any frontage. Located on that private street, as noted earlier. So with respect to the variances we're seeking tonight, we are seeking an F A R variance, not the cap, but the F A R itself. We are also seeking C variance relief for the front yard setback as noted, for the rear yard setback. Uh that we're we were extending and the lot coverage. With respect to the D four variance, we have the, as you well know, the Randolph Town Center case is the case on point. Which notes that the board's focus should be on how to psych it accommodate the impact of the larger than permitted floor area. Use itself as a single family dwelling is already permitted in the zone. And as noted in the two thousand sixteen master plan reexam report, primary intent behind the F A R limitation. Is to ensure that new or expanded homes are compatible with the scale and character of the existing neighborhood. I believe our proposal respects both of those. As noted in the October thirty two thousand uh twenty three, uh Historic Preservation Commission's memorandum of action. Approving the proposal, the the memorandum states, and I quote, the addition is consistent with the integrity of the original structure and will, quote unquote, balance. The overall scale of same. So as Mr. Cronin has noted in both of the, house will pretty much remain the same, at least architecturally. Blend seamlessly into what is already there and is considered historic in the sense that it is uh unique uh to this to this area. As known in the lot is severely undersized, had our lot been uh compliant, we would certainly conform to the F A R standards. And what we're really looking to do is to update the house and bring it into modern living standards, as Mr. Cronin indicated. The stairs would not be something that the dorm room code would permit today. Um as it noted, the cap, we we do not exceed the cap. I also note that three hundred and fifty one square feet, as the chairman had noted, of the habit of floor is really open space in that. We'll call it chapel area of the house, which formerly, the area formerly used as chapel space. With respect to the setbacks from the neighboring properties. Uh you have a hundred and forty seven feet to the east and forty four point eight feet to the west, this does not include, this is, this is. From the building itself, not not including the shed. These setbacks far exceed the minimum required thirty seven point five feet that is required by ordinance of separation from the neighboring properties. So that the principal structures on the neighboring properties. So clearly what we're proposing tonight is well within this uh the confines of the ordinance, if you will. So with respect to any kind of impacts, I think there's very little impact upon the surrounding properties in essence. What we're looking to do is keep the architectural integrity of the house and and uh like was noted in the um Historic Preservation Commission's memorandum. It, we seek to balance what's existing. Now, with respect to the hardships, again, you have the C one variance, um the hardship variance. I think the hardship set variance in this case, both the front yard and rear yard setback, almost self-explanatory. You need a thirty foot front yard and thirty foot rear yard, leaving a fifty four foot uh wide lot. So regardless of how you slice it, we're going to need some sort of variance relief, we are bringing that front yard setback. Um in a in a bit when the new addition is located, so that it does provide some. Contour to the house as well. But again, regardless, we're going to need some sort of setback variance from the front yard. With respect to the rear yard, again, we're maintaining the um the existing rear yard of Mr. Cronin noted, we are not um. Extending it all back to where the cantilever is today. With respect to maximum lot coverage, again, a lot is severely undersized, pretty much anything you're going to do here is going to result in some sort of need for variance relief. We have a driveway on site, as noted uh in my. Exhibit A twelve, there is a driveway on site, all of this is included in the lot coverage department, do not exceed the building coverage required, however. So in order to accommodate in a driveway on the site with the existing house, we'd still regardless be over lot coverage. And our lot coverage variance is not that significant. And had the lot met that minimum ten thousand square feet, it would certainly be well under the lot coverage requirement of the zone. With respect to the C two variance criteria, uh again, uh. We're trying to keep this house consistent with what's existing on the site. Um it is a beautiful historic house, we want to maintain that, of course, with. Unfortunately, it is a severely undersized lot, so there's little we can do without triggering some sort of relief and we're trying to ensure that what we're requesting is. In harmony with what is existing already. And um. Again, the, you know, we're trying to maintain the current setbacks as much as we can or reduce them in any way we can. Which I believe that this application vases purpose C of the M L U O, which aim to provide adequate wire and air and open space while aligning the property with modern living conditions. And standard without extracting from the surrounding data character, purpose G, promoting efficient use of land and helping fill goals of sustainability by updating the home, as Mr. Cronin had said. There may not be insulation in it, uh in certain sections of it, stairs are probably not to code. We're gonna bring this house into uh code compliance with modern uh modern standards. The adjustments also result in a advanced purpose I from what the desirable visual environment. I can't stress enough that the house is uh is unique in its character and its its aesthetic, and we hope to maintain that. And then there's also purpose J, which is. I really like this purpose of the zoning order of the of the M L U O, to ensure that historic structures maintain their existing character. So I think it's a very important purpose of zoning that we're hoping to meet by this proposal. Which of course, these are all of, for all of these reasons, we advance purpose A, the general welfare purpose of the or of the M L U O. But based on these proofs presented within the C two criteria, I think you can comfortably grant it shortly. Of course, no variance can be granted without finding that the uh the negative criteria is satisfied, there's no substantial detriment to the product's good. And again, our proposal respects that existing architecture, the aesthetic of the home, the historic character of the home. Uh again, light and air and open space, we're maintaining that. I want to add that that existing shed that we've been talking about is also adjacent to a garage. That appears to not meet the setbacks as well, so we're not really affecting the house here per se. But there is an existing garage in the front of A twelve that is adjacent to our property. Um we're not affecting the house itself, so this shed, which is located around here, is adjacent to that garage, which appears to be not compliant as well.
What's the setback that garage supposed?
I don't have an exact setback on that, because I don't have a survey, it's not determined that it's not mine. Well, I'm saying it appears to be not compliant, it it appears to be very close to the lot line, based on the aerial.
The garage on the property to the west?
To the. North, yes, to to the north. This. If this is north, this would be this this garage on block thirty five, a lot thirty five. Yeah, we don't have that, I can't see it, but based on the aerial, it appears to be pretty close to, it's definitely not one feet. I can't tell exactly what it is, I won't prove the exact measure. It looks to me like the house. That if you look at this house, your house from the front. The the garage on the house to the immediate left is. It's significantly off the property.
That's not the one, Doctor, the one to the north, not the one to the west, the one to the north.
This is, I don't have.
You're here on this side.
Yeah, if I may, or just orient the doctor, this. My name is. This is the garage. Section building, I'm speaking of here.
The north is to the left, Doctor, on that exhibit.
Okay, this would be to the north. So this is where the shed is, this is where all admission is here. There's this large tree line here. And this is the accessory building I'm talking about. Thank you. Okay. And with respect to the house. If I may, Doctor, the house is here, this is the house we're running to. That's the accessory building. We're not. We're in no way really affecting the line here to this house. There is a accessory building. In between their house, their house and our property. It also be seen on. I don't remember. Which exhibit this is, this is the.
A eleven.
A eleven, you'll see it in.
Ten.
Eight ten, I'm sorry. Guess this is the second page, if you look at the top photo, that is eight twenty eight A and twenty eight B glassy on it, if I may, you can see. Where the. In the side yard here, you can see. The shed on our property and the accessory building on the adjacent property.
That's okay, okay.
You see what I'm talking about, that's why I'm saying it appears it's pretty close.
Yeah.
I can't tell exactly, it just appears that it's less than five feet, five feet, I can't verify, I do not have a survey of it. And with respect to the rear uh the rear yard extension setback, we're maintaining that existing setback, we're not going further. And with respect to the intended purpose of the zone plan. The one thing I'm gonna say is, uh again, uh the historic commission put it best, we're trying to keep historic character of the house. And that's directly goes to your two thousand sixteen reexam reports, goal of historic preservation and the importance of preserving. And that's directly goes to your two thousand sixteen reexam reports goal of historic preservation and the importance of preserving. Historic structures in town. So that pretty much sums up my testimony with respect to this application, I welcome any questions that you may have.
Not a question, but I've just a comment, so it's our town, that's the opposite side of the street is our five, and the lot really reads like an open by lot.
In essence, yes. I would agree.
Mr. Riggins, are there any drainage improvements proposed?
Uh no drainage improvements are proposed, I'm not aware of any drainage issue, certainly as the applicant has to.
There's certainly a drainage issue on both. And to the extent that this house is draining to the private street and draining to Gillespie, then winding up in the river, there's significant issue there. My question is whether or not there's anything proposed, the answer is no. My next question is whether or not there's potential to install a dry well in relation to the um to the new roof leaders, maybe even more than.
Going to recall Mr. Cronin, Chair.
There are two large storm grates, like storm grates, that will be in a street in the easement and in front of our property. There um. There's one uh sort of directly in front of the front door, and then there's one for the. For the uh. Yes, if you look at uh my sheet two oh four, you see the metal grate, the two metal grates are.
Just orient the board, where where's Captain's Way?
Captain's Way is at the bottom of the sheet. The the this is part of the uh the the right of way, the easement. Um this is the lawn that Mrs. Nelson was talking about mowing. And uh there is a two, there are two large storm grates in the easement that. I assume carry the runoff down to Gillespie, I don't know where they carry the runoff to, but they're there.
I mean, I've heard that they're there, I don't know if they're necessarily at the low point, it's it's hard to tell, I don't recall that they are.
They were subjected like nine years of. Back and forth and engineers and planners and reports and. Frankly, they still probably don't work because I know the ones on the. South side of the property.
Don't work, they may not tie in at it, and they just may be.
Why why are they in the lawn, guys?
What's that?
Why are they in the lawn?
They didn't want to. Any runoff going towards the. Twenty Gillespie letter, I don't recall that, probably the lawn report is not so.
The lawn, the lawn in the front of the house, I mean, like, looks low. I went by it today and and uh it it's it looks very low in comparison to the uh surrounding property.
I mean, well, all right, so look, so just from a casual observer looking at a survey, seeing two metal grates in the middle of lawn. That's a newly constructed, my guess is that somebody thinks there's a water issue. Um I'm going to go back to my original question, is there an opportunity to improve the drainage situation on the existing lot in relation to the new square foot?
So what I would say, Chairman, is uh since there's no topo that's shown on this plan. Maybe give us the opportunity to submit to Mr. Rizzo, should the board deem appropriate to to issue approval this evening that they grading drainage plan. If Mr. Rizzo feels that it's necessary to install, you know, supplemental. Uh you know, a scoreboard recharge system, I think that's a reasonable request, we are seeking a lot of variance. It is slight, it's an existing non-conforming condition, you certainly don't want to exacerbate any condition that they do the survey actually. With with topo letter.
Uh I think if the if the applicant had a water problem, the applicant probably be proposing it on her own. What I'm focusing on is the opportunity to improve the situation for the neighborhood overall. Not necessarily that you can't drain it off site and get it into these metal grades, but whether or not there's a better solution, if we can put a dry well on this property. But but part of that is whether or not you have a location for it, and that's really.
It it, excuse me, looking at the survey. Um A six, and it does look like the the inlet rates are in the low spots, that's a great start. Um I don't know that those necessarily. I don't know what they do, I don't know if they detain the water, they connect it anywhere, I don't know if they.
The point is that they're not on the lot per se, they're in the easement.
They're in the, they're in the right way, yeah.
If there's a way, if there's somewhere we can put something.
Uh did you also look at me? You have the, heard this variance.
By by removing a hundred square feet somewhere?
Correct.
And that's maybe just like that.
What's the patio table to be used for, is that accessible to inside the house, is that?
Yeah, it looks like there are steps.
Um we could reduce this patio, the patio to the to the side, the east side here. By a hundred, by the amount that we're over.
How old is that patio?
It you built it, it was the Nelson apartment.
I've structured a permit.
I had a permit to do the house, to do the renovation.
Was the patio part of the plan when the house was renovated?
Was it on the construction plan?
Plan to the zoning office. Can you, can you just come set the microphone to pick you up?
I had it, I I just had a renovation, so there there wasn't a plan, it didn't matter.
It it goes, it goes through zoning and because it was approved, it it couldn't have been shown on the plan because you would have wound up here. Because you currently are not in compliance. You're you're exacerbating the 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 non-conforming condition by adding additional impervious as part of the application. So the.
So I guess what I'm going to say is I replaced an old wooden deck with 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 stone, so you're saying I couldn't have done that?
I mean, we're we're over by like six square feet, I mean, that's that's a very easy calculation error from existing conditions.
So what's, so what's, what's the limitation right now, what's the existing and what's the proposed?
Forty-five in percentage, is that okay?
Sure.
Forty-five percent is required, forty-five point one percent is existing. Forty-six point seven is proposed, so an increase of one point six percent.
And that's only six square feet, you're saying?
No, six is the one tenth of the percent over the forty-five. We're proposing to go over by a hundred and one square feet.
The existing being over is by six.
Correct, so we're six square feet over now, we propose to go to a hundred and one square feet, so that delta's ninety-five square feet.
So I take back what I've said, it could be a rounding error in terms of the plans that you showed and what eventually got to, it's possible.
Wasn't on the plans, but. Okay, so I I would say, I would say we can find ninety-five square feet or a hundred and one square feet, that's what we need.
Can we just get to the compliant number, maybe eliminate?
That's a hundred and one square feet, yes, we can stipulate to that.
I'm more interested in seeing some water get into the ground. Um but I haven't heard any clear indication that there's a place to put a dry well and an opportunity to get some water into recharge. As opposed to being thrown into that zone tour. But you don't know, at the end of the day, you don't know today whether or not you can do that.
Luckily, the applicant did testify that they could submit drainage calculations to the IQ, and if there was a viable opportunity.
So I don't think we need to, sorry, because we have a survey now, which I I've realized, the survey shows the existing topo.
Okay.
Doesn't show anything proposed. But it does, it does at least show that the unless they're there at a low spot.
And the applicant's unaware of any drainage issue affecting.
They drain anywhere, is anywhere, is it more of a tension?
I I can't see it, I don't know what happens once it goes in there, whether they connect into anything, or they they don't go anywhere.
I think it's pretty unlikely that it's that it's retained, I think that that's also a surer, that's that would be my guess, although nobody knowing any better than this.
Well, you, I was saying something that he thought it might not actually go anywhere.
Okay, so. All right, I I've got ideas, we'll get that part. Okay, uh is Mr. Hudek come? No further questions, Mr. Hudek.
Anyone else from Mr. Hudek?
I actually have a question, the portion of the grass here that that's maintained where the grates are shown. What is the approximate square footage of that, I know it's a wild calculation because it's got.
The overall grass area?
The overall grass area that exceeds where her lot line is, right? But it's not, but it's in the right of way that she maintains, what is that?
I don't know, to the east of the driveway?
Yes, to the east of the asphalt driveway, that's correct.
Yes.
I know it's a.
Just ballpark it, if you would please, Mr. Cronin.
Yeah.
Yeah, this area here, the wreaths. Behind the house.
Just the, just the gross numbers, help me the math.
Roughly seventy-eight but twenty in drought.
Yeah?
Eighty, thirty, twenty-four hundred square feet, twenty-four.
I'm going to talk about it, we're going to look at. Twenty-four hundred square feet.
Almost twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, you got the answer to your question, any other questions, Mr. Hudek? Okay, Mr. Cronin, Mr. Hudek, you're making a problem.
Uh only if the board wants further questions from the applicant about water conditions on the property to assure themselves that there's no water issue presently. And again, we do think we can get to get down by a hundred and one square feet so that we're at the number eliminating that variance.
I don't, anybody have any further questions to the applicant? Not not right now, for sure.
Okay.
That's for there.
Advocate rest of the.
All right, so to public, any members of the public have any questions or comments with regard to the uh Nelson application?
Uh Devon Whitelock, forty-four Gillespie Avenue.
So, hold on, hold on, Mr. White. Mr. White, hold on, just to make sure that we have all the information that we need before we get started, and we're going to swear it. Can you spell your last name?
W H I T E L A W.
Okay, you saw me spread a testimony before the board to be the truth, well, we're talking about the truth.
Um I live in forty-four Gillespie Avenue, that's it. Words. This is the lot, this is my house right here. So just on the water issue, just so let you know, I've lived there for twenty years. And the only time there was ever flooding here was in the winter and it was on the the old accessory. So I've never had water come from the property.
Okay.
So just as a as an experience, right?
Mr. White, the garage that was in question, I assume it's your garage then?
No, the garage you were talking about was on thirty-five, right?
No, no, your property.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Can you tell us approximately how far that is from the property line?
I don't know, we went to the board eighteen years ago and did a renovation, and we met all requirements, so we each attend to eat whatever it's supposed to be from the the line.
Great, thank you.
So um as we talked about, so this new addition is what we can see from our yard when we come out, this is our side door that we use all the time. I mean, right now, that roof line is so large that just by going up two stories, I don't really see it making much of a difference in our perspective of seeing it. And I actually kind of like the one window, because it's from a perspective of privacy. So I I think what they've done is great, and I'd like to just say that I think the house is really intriguing. I mean, I felt really terrible to knock down Lucky's house, you know, I mean, and that's so, thi- this is part of that neighborhood that is that I loved about being here, and that's why we're in this old town. And I think that they're going to keep that, and I mean, the Nelsons own British cars, I mean, they love tradition and all this kind of stuff, so I know they're going to do an awesome job on this project. So personally, I'm excited with what they're doing, I think it'll be great for them, and I don't see this as being an issue for us, so I fully support it on purpose.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you. Can you state your name, spell your last name?
Henry, this is the first name, Nemser, N E M S E R.
You saw me spread the testimony before the board to be the truth, well, we're talking about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I live um twenty-eight A, which I can't quite see here.
Directly to the west, Mr. Nemser?
Directly to the west, we share a common fence. And uh I haven't had any kind of water issue coming from their side over to my side. And I've lived on this street for quite a long time, uh twenty-six years. There used to be a big problem in front of that house that the Nelsons are in, but a lot of that got rectified. Uh with some of that storm, the drain that's existing by the easement. Just to underscore that, so I think it's only improved since Captain's Point Way was created. But one last thing I want to confirm, because the numbers went pretty fast, this whole bump out that's coming in my direction. Was roughly how many feet?
From your house?
Now, the addition on to what's there, what's the?
Going west. You want to know how many square feet it is, or how many feet it's familiar?
Mister Cronin. Let, oh, I have to propose the outside of the house, I mean, I've talked with the Nelsons a few times, and I just couldn't quite hear in the back what. The final number was, it's a little over seventy?
Yeah, yes.
That's all I have.
Does that shed bother you?
Any other members of public, questions, comments, please? Let the record reflect now. Okay, Mr. Riggins, you have anything to propose?
Um other than to uh again indicate to the board, to the extent that uh. The board has an issue with the shed, that can certainly be dealt with, it sounds as though the neighbor, Mr. Nemser, has no issue with the shed. There's flexibility there, the applicant stipulates reducing the uh impervious lot coverage by a hundred and one square feet to get to the forty-five percent thereby. Eliminating the request not only for the enhanced variance, but also the existing non-conformity that would become a conforming condition that at forty-five percent. So on behalf of Mr. Mrs. Nelson, thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation, especially in the context of this very historical home, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggins.
Thank you.
All right, so look, so the 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 vaulted ceiling throws you off, that has clearly has historical value. Um there's clearly an effort here to work with something that is worth saving. Um the shed is a little problematic, but um I I propose to actually grant variance. So it can stay where it is, you've got a very tight, limited line. Um and while it didn't get there the right way, uh it seems to me like it's not a problem where it is. On the other side, though, I'm not inclined to reduce the lot coverage as much as I'm inclined to get some underground drainage. Um and so that's kind of the way I feel about this, I don't know what everybody else is.
As in, don't require them to remove the hundred and one. Feet and instead do a dry well, or you're saying?
I would not, I I would not ask them to remove the hundred, although I I do acknowledge that it's certainly well within their rights to remove it. To remove the request for the variance, and perhaps the way to do it since after probing, the applicant didn't offer to do it. Would be to give the option to the applicant either to put in the underground retention or to remove the um impervious.
I would just say to explore the possibility of underground retention, I just don't know if there's a spot given where we're going to add roof line. To, you may not have room to build, you know what I mean?
It may be, it may be a net zero, I mean, I don't know where they can put it, they can put it either in the far side of the driveway on the east west. Or you can put it in the lawn on the right, it's disruptive, you have to dig a hole, or they're just going to grow grass back. There are other issues where your utility connections and other things. Um there's certainly the value in understanding whether or not there's capacity for the ground to take the lawn. Um but but the net reduction with regard to what's going to Gillespie is important. Um when forefront um dealt with their building, there was um a lot of concern about their drainage. Uh subsequent to their development, um there was some line, it's the amount of water that was projecting down Gillespie. And headed to the river, um when you take a house like this and improve it, that the the net reduction is valuable to the neighborhood. Um and I think you have an occasion here to include it, um at least in include the exploration of whether or not it can be done. Um in a meaningful way, and so that's what I propose we do.
I think the east-west uh span of the house is pretty significant, uh and uh. I I'm I'm a little bothered by the shed, I I think it only adds to the east-west span of the house. And uh I I I personally, if it doesn't bother the neighbor. I guess it shouldn't bother me, but I think in terms of looking at the house from the from uh sailor's point. Uh or captain's point, um. I know the area is buffered and it's buffered, you know, front and back of the driveway, but uh. I I still think, looking at the house from the front, it looks a little bit more extensive east-west. Uh with that, with the shed and without the shed.
And well, I'll I'll agree with you on that, but I think, given the lack of storage in the house overall, and no garage, I think you really. The shed's a necessity, and to bring it into compliance, to move it five feet closer, I think you'd be knocked down about ten feet if that.
That would also make it look even more.
Yeah, squashed.
Yeah, and substantial, because they'd be connected rather than have it.
I'm inclined with the chance of you, Chairman, that we we should can memorialize the shed and grab a leaf and leave it where it is, I don't.
I I'm not, I'm not thinking about about moving the shed, I'm thinking about eliminating the shed.
You remove it, I mean, and I agree with you on that, but you, the lack of storage, you have to, we're going to wait, wanting to see how.
That's just my take, if there's a garage and a shed, I agree with you a hundred percent.
If you were doing the, the shed from scratch, you'd do half that shed. You know, it would be bigger than, it's ten by ten, that's pretty big.
Not really.
Five by ten would handle two bikes and a lawn.
Sure.
Point taken.
As far as the lot coverage numbers, and I, I'll give the chairman, the vaulted ceiling tells you, be on the, on the square footage. I read the lot as, uh, uh, as an R five lot, and, you know, given that context, although it is in the R ten zone, across the street is R five. Uh, you hit the, you know, it's forty percent, um, floor ratio, you come within that number, you're fifty feet inside the twenty-three hundred cap, it, it just.
And, and visually, it's almost the opposite of the application that just came before, with all the extra grass in front. This house, this lot appears to be much larger than what it actually is.
Yeah, when you're jogging down, when you go down that street, and I, I really, until I saw this, I assumed that was part of the, of, of the property.
As rarely as half your front yard to the easement.
Yeah.
Can't imagine that anything's ever gonna happen on that piece of property, they don't. It, from how she described the easement, she has an easement to just her driveway. Not the, uh, the, you know, lawn on either side.
Right.
The, that, that square footage has gotta be part of what was considered throughout all of the.
Of the litigation.
Litigations.
It's probably part of the, the lot that the house is on at the far side, and was included relative to their capital.
Not a hundred percent sure of that, but because there is a piece of property there. That was owned by the developer, and there was, I think there was an easement to. The assist, I, I don't remember. The whole thing. And honestly, the, the, there are grates on the south side of it. The development, um, that were set up to go into dry wells. Some assuming ones on the north side probably set up the same way, however. The, the grading throughout, at least on the south side, was such that they. Were ineffective, they, the, the homeowner had to tear them out and route stuff around to an, another existing dry well. In order to keep the backyard from becoming a mud bath, and, and honestly, in the whole course of everything here. The sanitary sures are just barely buried to a legal depth because of the grading of the whole property. So, it, it's, it's been done to death as far as the drainage there is concerned.
Hmm.
There was a big concern on the twenty-eight Gillespie people's. Part because of the water issues on the private drive there, but that's gone. And.
Yeah, that was.
The road is.
So that must be, they, they didn't want the sheet flow from the private drive exited to Gillespie, so they tried to capture as much water. Before it got to the street as possible and put it into a dry well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Are, are you suggesting, though, Al, that as a result of all of that, that it wouldn't make sense to put a dry well on this property for the Nelsons?
Um, I'm saying that. I don't have a problem with the reduction of the impervious surface by a hundred and one square feet to bring it into compliance, not require the variance. You prefer not to try to put a dry well in there because, um. You know, honestly, I don't know where to go unless you built it underneath, and I don't know if this patio. To the, uh, to the west is existing. Or if they're gonna build that after they do the addition, they're gonna build it after they do, the, the addition, I suppose there's a. Possibility to put something so under there, but.
Depends if it's on the plans.
You know, I mean, honestly, it's, it's. The drainage in the area and, and sort of including these properties. Was, was beaten to death for years.
Yeah.
So.
And that's up there, it sounds like it has been. This is, the drainage issue has been.
Fully explored.
It's fully explored, back and forth, and, um, you know, I'd love to see dry wells, but if this. Drain is a dry well, and I think that we need to find, you know, find that out. Um, you know, instead of them looking for a dry well, have somebody, an water, an engineer come in and figure out what's going on there. But it sounds like it, it, whatever is there, it's the best that can be done.
If there previously was a wooden deck on that east side, and they've replaced it with. A patio, I don't know what the material of patio is, unless it says it on, I don't see.
It says sleep.
With border, sleep steps.
Yes.
And sleep patio.
I have a photo on page nine.
Who knows what was under the wooden. Deck, but that is probably a whole lot more formidable than the sleep patio, and, and the fact that that was. Added later, you know, I'm, I. I don't really have a problem with asking them to. Cut that back to be compliant and remove that one variance check.
Yeah, so, but to move on from the drainage, but, but trying to, it seems like. A lot of very smart people looked at this problem for a very long time, and this is what they came up with, you know, just looking at the application. You know, it's a very historic house, very unique house. Um, you know, we look at the trade-offs that are going on, you know, it's bringing up the code, I can only imagine what those stairs were like, uh. Uh, you keep the character of the building, you're removing some non-conformities, so, you know, and I, I think the neighbors, everyone seems happy with this design. Um, you know, I have no problem with this, I think it's, uh, you know, a very unique piece of the history of Bear Haven. And instead of ripping it down and putting up something else, keep that character and history there, I think is what, you know. What our, uh, you know, one of our orders is, uh, through the master plan.
Yep. Great.
I did a little bit of math, trying to figure out, because I mean, looking at pictures and everything with that vaulted ceiling there. And the fact that three hundred fifty-one square feet of that counts against the, as, as. Um. Floor area, thanks, because I'm, I was about to say.
We're all there, we're all.
Um, honestly, if you back that three hundred fifty-one feet out. I believe that they, the. F A R would come in compliant.
Right, if you set it under R five, it's, it's pretty close.
No, 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 I mean, for the zone.
R ten zone itself?
It actually comes out point zero one below.
Unusable, yeah, roughly. Space out.
Oh, okay. For your time, really, I thought it was, I'm not sure.
I did it. Part of it.
I got three.
Twenty-one, what, twenty-one, twenty-five? Twenty-one sixteen.
Okay.
That was.
Six, three, three, six.
It's, it's point three-three at four.
Yeah, I got point three-three-six, but it's basically point three-fourths, it's under.
Bro, under what, the requirement of point two eight?
Point two eight. Oh.
It's under.
Oh, you know, it's under, it's under what it was previously.
But, but it's there, it's not needed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so let's split the discussion up, let's talk about the house and structure itself, anybody have any problems with the thing on the top?
No.
Okay, next issue is the shed, and the last issue is into lot coverage. What does everybody think about the shed?
I don't have a problem with the shed.
Leave it. No problem, no problem, I don't have a problem with the shed either, I think it's worth, it's worth noting that people should pursue the proper permits when they do this and not just expect. They can replace something, especially for people who've renovated, it sounds like numerous houses before, so, well, within knowledge base, that would think.
This shed is not gonna make the difference in my decision.
Mine, mine either.
Okay, uh, let's talk about drainage, um, I think what I put on the table was that the applicant be given an option. Either to take the variance and install drainage that would be approved by, uh, Mr. Rizzo. Or to not take the variance and remove the lot coverage and bring the property into compliance.
I love it.
Great.
I'd be okay with it if everyone else.
Because there's an expense involved as well, right, and if you choose to, uh, the patio is worth the expense, but the dry well. I'm not sorry about this, and I know we're not supposed to talk about expense, but I'm saying it's a good.
Chair, are you, are you suggesting leaving it open beyond tonight, or, or that's?
I'm, I'm suggesting we grant a conditional variance that would include the obligation to install a new dry well. To deal with, and we haven't talked about wet water, but I think it's gonna be matter of what's feasible, um. In light of, you know, their opportunity to develop it, or, uh, no variance for it, and they would simply have to remove the impervious that puts them over.
And if they don't wanna go through the exercise of proving that it doesn't work, they, they could just remove the.
Right, under one. They are big, no C three. I just wanna say with regard to the drainage, while this property was turned over a million times. The boundary of the property that was turned over and analyzed did not include this one. And while I appreciate that the neighbors have said they don't have problems with water coming from this property onto theirs. Um, the, that isn't really the only thing to consider and think about, um.
When you're, you suggested granting a variance for the shed. Would that be specific to this particular shed, if they ended up changing the shed to a smaller shed, then they'd have to come back?
The, the nature of the variance would be to grant it for a shed of that exact size and dimension and that exact location. I do think we need some verification that it's inside of the property boundary, if everybody says it's on the line. Uh, but then that would run the line, and you could replace it at a back for me, um, with a, an identical shed.
Those are fast, those are.
Well, we, we, we don't have to, mind you, if you're proposing something different, which is to grant the variance for the existing one, you can talk to the lawyer about that.
If they were trying to, to lower their impervious coverage to hundred and one, and they wanted to maybe downsize the shed. And that gets you some portion there, and then take some from someplace else, and that might tie their hands if you granted them. The variance for that particular shed.
Certainly, we already placed it in the last.
I have a signed survey that says shed on one.
Okay, so it's on their property. Doesn't meet the setbacks, but the option is, or, it'll still be A or B, is it on one line or two?
Sorry?
Is it on the exact one, or just on the side?
No, it's on the side. Yeah.
Chairman, if you word the, uh, if the motion is worded to allow a, in the alternative, a hundred and one square foot reduction. At the applicant's choosing, then it could be shed and or patio and or slate patio.
Yeah, we're not specifying it has to be that patio to the north side.
At that point, if you reduce the shed, reduce it away from the property.
Of course.
I think the idea is, I think the idea is there's flexibility.
You mean flexibility to reduce a hundred and one square feet?
Something that wasn't permitted on the, on the line and.
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to address the spirit of the comments, which we all agree there should be permits, right?
Or put a draw.
Not defensive, not defensive.
Chair, just, just be very detailed also, if a one oh one square feet would get us to the existing condition, I think we should take it all the way to the.
One oh seven.
If it's to comply.
One oh seven.
Okay. Oh, my apology, I thought one oh one got us to where we need to exist, it gets us to forty-five point one, so add the extra six feet, so.
I said, I thought that too.
My apologies, sorry, I misunderstood that.
No, I don't.
One oh seven, sure, not one oh one, one oh seven.
Okay, so, um. I, I, I think the issue with regard to the lot coverage, variance with the dry well or no dry well and no variance, I think that much is clear. With regards to the shed, I, I feel like this is one of these properties that's really hampered with regard to square footage. And because of the configuration of the other lots in immediate proximity to the shed, this is a place where having a shed on the lot line. Doesn't bother me at all, it bothers me that you didn't get a permit, but I'm looking beyond that. Because I'm trying to figure out how to make sure that the property works, I don't wanna see the lawn mower in the front yard under the tarp. Um, and I, I think it's important that, that that be thought about in terms of the ability to use the house in the.
This is on a slab?
No, I asked that question.
It was not volunteer, but it is on, but it was.
It's on block, she said, I believe me.
It's on block, on block.
Block.
It's on, I'm. Uh, gravel inside, so the floor is gravel, it's a shed off the back of the truck, is it not?
So there's no basement, there's no.
There's no floor, there's no floor in it?
There's a garage.
There's no floor, it's gravel floor.
No, no, I.
Probably can leave the shed.
No, no, I was.
He's, he's.
I was saying, I was saying the, the.
Let the architect test the lot.
Just, just.
Or a shed, yeah, leave the shed, yeah.
It's, it's a shed, they create a perimeter, they put the stone, they set the shed on it, so it drains underneath, it doesn't sit in water and rot.
I was asking about the, the residential structure.
Um, the, none of it's a slab, the thing, the piece were taken down, looks like it was built on sleepers over a garage on the first floor. Because it's really close to the ground, and I can't imagine it being any other way, but the. The main part of the house is, has a cellar, it was a mess with Mr. Rizzo, it is truly a cellar, it is not a half story. Um, but it is, does that answer your question, Mr. Huda?
Alright, so unless somebody wants to talk you out of it, I'm proposing to approve the shed exactly where it is on the lot line. I'm proposing to grant the variance for the, uh, impervious provided that they provide, uh, dry well. Uh, to take as much of the roof drain, uh, water as possible, given Mr. Rizzo's review with regard to feasibility. And in the alternative, uh, they reduce the lot coverage to conform, uh, and that no variance to grant. And that last but not least, that we approve the addition as designed, the, the approval would be conditioned. On the testimony this evening, also the representations that are made for the board this evening with regards to the materials. As echoed in the historic district's memo.
And the removal, chairman, pardon me, was a hundred and seven square feet, that's right, yes.
I, I do second your supply, it sounds like that's one and seven.
Yes. And anyway, if you get to one oh seven, was acceptable.
It's not about getting to one oh seven, it's about getting to forty-five percent.
But he's asking, can you take?
Whatever it has to be, forty-five percent?
However you get to that, yeah, yeah, yes, thank you. Yeah, so that's my proposal, I'm happy to have deliberation, or I'd like a second.
I have second, or Mr. Consultant, second, okay.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dan? Yes. Mr. Fordson?
Yes.
Sergeant Loffer?
Yes.
Yes.
No, Mr. Waiter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you're glad.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time, thank you for arranging the special meeting as well, we're very grateful for the opportunity.
I don't, I don't think it's perfect, no.
Yeah, so we'll just quickly open up to other public comment, if there's anyone else here that has any questions or comments on the board generally? I've seen no one, so, uh, hopefully my turn. I, I do wanna thank everybody, so you know, it's, you're all volunteers to make this special meeting, to get here.
No better way to start, I mean.
Thank you, well, everybody but for John.